Fairlife Project located east of T-Bor Road. African Fairlife Incorporated is a subsidiary of the Coca-Cola Company. It is requesting preliminary final subdivision of site plan approval among the public hearing associated with the construction of a 12,745,000 square foot dairy processing facility. A combination of portions of five lots at the eastern terminus of T-Bor Road totaling approximately 110 acres. It is located in an IN industrial district under section 269-11 and 350-22 of the toll of the Town of Webster.
Gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening. Why don't you just give us your names for the record?
Joshua Downmore, Senior Director of Engineering for Fairlife.
Joshua, Civil Engineer for Haskell.
All right, and you have a presentation to give here tonight, right?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead if you want to start with that.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, just to go over, we're going to provide some background and project update. We'll go through the site overview. We'll talk about the methods we've gone through with mitigation to the neighbors and the local community. We'll do a deep dive on the actual site design, and then we'll address the parcels. So, as Josh introduced himself, we've also got some of the people that are from Haskell, from Fairlife, presenting this particular specialist questions that Josh and myself will answer.
Excuse me just for a second. Can you folks hear that okay? You hearing it okay out there? Can you hear it right? All right, can you guys hear it right here? It's a little loud, so.
Oh, this is closer. If I get that closer.
Is this mic? Okay. We'll try to get, go ahead.
One, two, one, two. Yeah. So, yes, we have a team in New Orleans also. So, just to provide some background, ahead of this planned meeting today, we submitted our sketch application back in May on the 17th for the board meeting on June 12th. We submitted an address and tenant in our full civil package, preliminary and/or final site plan approval on July 12th, which was subsequently updated due to comments on the 6th and the 18th. And we've continued to meet with the neighbors in case of community. First in May when we initially presented the project, and then again in July, to come back and explain all of the actions that we've taken, subject to their comments. And then, in July, the application for the site plan approval was incomplete at that time, as the CICA was not completed, and the zoning board of approvals had not acted on Fairlife's application at that point. So, since that day of July 12th, the town board has lead agency completed the CICA review on September 7th with a negative declaration. And last week, the zoning board of approvals granted all of our requested variances in September 12th. So, as I mentioned, tonight's presentation is to provide a very high-level summary of the project as it evolves since June. So, just to orientate, everybody with the site, I'm going to start in the top left-hand corner. So, we placed a six-foot landscape berm around the perimeter, depicted in green. Obviously, our stormwater management facilities in the ponds. We've got the auto entrance, which has got employees only, with a guardhouse. And then, we add some decorative fencing for one of our neighbors, and the auto parking lot you can see around G. Truck entrance further down, so that's coming off of T-Bor Road, with all the milk-receiving trucks, our MT and Ford vehicles. And then, further down in the bottom left-hand corner is wastewater treatment facility. And again, we added another six-foot landscape berm running parallel with 104. On the other side of the page at the top right is our finished goods trailer parking, and then the automated storage and retrieval system, so that's our warehouse. The proposed building in the center accommodates all of our production and process equipment. And then, again, we've got more of the six-foot landscape berms to mitigate the line of site issues for our neighbors, which we'll get into in detail in a bit. And then, we've extended the six-foot landscape berm with 14-foot concrete fence on the top of it. As I said, we'll go into that in a bit more detail around the line of site, etc.
All right, so now that we've oriented you to the site, we want to zoom out a little bit and talk about the different utility infrastructures that are going to be upgraded as part of the project. So, the first one is power. And so, RG&E is going to be upgrading their substations. They're going to be changing out their transformers for a little bit larger transformers, and then running new lines to the site. So, you can see in orange, that's the electrical coming from the east and from the west. The second thing is gas. So, the gas will be coming, it's shown here in the gray, about a mile and a half, seven or seven thousand two hundred linear feet of gas line to the site to be able to provide the demand that we need. The third thing is the sewer. So, we will have a wastewater pretreatment facility on the south side of our facility, and it will discharge into the public main there. As we get further in, we'll explain about the difference between the public and private. But there is a public main that runs through the site. But we will also, the Town of Webster will be upgrading the sewer. This is shown in green, all the way to their facility over on the Phillips. And then, the water is shown in blue here on T-Bor. We will be also upgrading that line from an eight inch to a 10 inch to be able to meet the demands of the project. So, those are the four areas of infrastructure that will be upgraded as part of the project. The other off-site improvement will be roadway infrastructure. So, the first improvement is the extension of the Walter Industrial Parkway, because it currently ends at the baseball field, it's just north of the soccer fields. It'll extend over to Salt Road at the intersection of Mitchell Dean Drive. So, that would be an improvement that the Town of Webster is going to be making. And then, as part of the Fairlife project, we will be doing a turn lane at Basket Road in 104. That'd be a right turn lane to improve the traffic there. So, those are the off-site improvements that will be a part of the project, both utility and roadway. So, now talking about mitigation, so there's four main things that we looked at as far as mitigation for the neighbors and the adjoining residents. So, one is visual, one is noise, the next is lighting, and then the burden wall. So, first of all, I just want to talk a little bit about the visual. So, what we've got is a live-a-site going from the residential areas on the east side of the property, looking back towards, looking west back towards the facility. And so, as Darren said, we do have a berm, it's a six-foot berm that runs along the property. On the top of that, we will have a 14-foot concrete sound wall. And then, in front of that, we will have some landscaping. We have another slide too that we can go through to talk some more about the trees and the landscaping that'll be actually on both sides of that wall. And one of the things we wanted to point out in this view is the roadway that runs north-south along the residential side, we intentionally looked at the light poles, and we wanted to make sure that those were low. So, they're a 12-foot pole on a four-foot base, so their total height was 16 feet. And the other thing you can see is that the ground, we maintained the berm that came up unexisted, but because of the site going from, drained from south to north, we did have to drop portions of the site. So, you'll see that it actually drops as you come into the site. So, this light will actually leave below the top of that wall as well. The other factor that goes into that is that we're looking at truck movements. Trucks are generally 13 and a half feet tall, so with a 14-foot wall and a six-foot berm that does hide the view of all the trucks that are moving through the site. So, as part of the visual, we worked with the neighbors, they were very gracious to allow us to come onto their property, and we worked with them to get pictures that look from their homes looking towards the site. And so, the one on the bottom is the summer view, so that's the ones, those are actual pictures with the building and the silos rendered in. It also includes the wall and some of our landscaping. So, this is the actual picture as was taken just a month or two ago. But then, we also looked at the winter view. So, we wanted to see what it would look like in winter conditions when the leaves drop. And so, this particular one is right here, this is number one. So, this is looking towards the site, and you can see the silos there. And you can see a little bit better as you look in the winter condition. The next one is number two, as shown over here on the left. So, here's the summer condition, and then here's the winter condition. And you can see the silos over here, and then the ASRS, which is the highest point of the building. And then, we have one more we want to show you. This is number four on the left. This is the summer view and the winter view. Once again, you can see the ASRS. You can faintly see a little bit of the wall back here, but then the ASRS is the prominent thing, just to see. Moving from line to site, the next thing we did as far as mitigation was the acoustical analysis. So, what we evaluated is we looked at what the ambient noise was at the site. So, we had sensors located in four locations around this area, just to see what the normal noises have been. And then, from that, we analyzed, once this facility is in operation, the increase in noise, and what would have to be done to make sure that we are not increasing the sound at the property line by more than five decibels, and then we keep the sound below the 50 decibels during that time. So, based on that acoustical analysis, we do have the 14-foot sound wall on top of the berm that runs along this north area, along the east side, and down to this corner down here. So, based on that acoustical analysis, that does limit the noise impacts to the residents. One thing to point out too, as we start the project, the intention is to clear the site. We're going to do the clearing grubbing, and we'll start the berm activities. That's one of the first things that we'll start with. And then, the next thing we'll do is start putting in the sound wall. So, the intention is to get the sound wall in early, so as we do construction, we're already mitigating the noise even at the beginning. The next thing we looked at as far as mitigation was for light. So, we did a photometric study, and it's hard to see in this, but if you were to zoom in, each one of these little dots is a number. So, it's looking at the light spillage from each of these light poles. So, we analyzed at the property line to make sure that there was zero spillage. So, all of the light poles within the facility are either 16 or 20-foot light pole on a four-foot base. But out at the auto entrance, because there are residents that are just to the north of that auto entrance, and we wanted to be conscious of that, make sure that we're not adding a lot of extra light to their yards, but also providing light for our employees as they're coming in. We used four-foot Wallard lights that shine down, so it'll create a safe passageway for the autos to come in, but not create too much light for the residents that are just to the north of that. And then, the last mitigation aspect is traffic. So, we did an analysis, first looking at if all the trucks use the Walter Industrial Parkway, and all came out to Salt and down to 104. This intersection down here at Salt 104 is a faster-moving, there's on-ramps, off-ramps, basket. Because there's not currently turn lanes, it just limits the amount of traffic. So, we first looked at it as all the trucks would go to Salt. But we understood that we can't limit all the trucks. Truck drivers are going to go where they want to go. So, we did do an analysis looking at what happens if the trucks that are coming westbound on 104, if they came down Basket. And by doing the improvements, by doing the industrial parkway and the turn lane, we were able to keep the levels of service as they are currently. And you'll see here to the right, these are the changes in AM and PM wait times in seconds. So, moving from mitigation into more of the deep dive of the site, there's a lot of things that we want to talk through. We're going to go through the auto entrance, truck entrance, emergency access points, security, snowplow, storage and operations, facility signage, utility plans, which will include water, fire protection, private sewers and public sewers, natural gas, electric, wastewater pretreatment, and the tanks that go along with that, stormwater, erosion control, and landscape. So, we've got a bunch of slides to go through for you, hopefully a lot of good information. So, first of all, I want to start off with the auto entrance. So, this is on the north side of the site. We've got the blow-up over here that shows kind of the, kind of lets you know where you're at. But this is the auto entrance off of Basket. So, there are some existing facilities. There's a Penske, there used to be a Penske facility, and then the Rock Gym. So, we will still provide access to those two facilities. And then, you'll come back, and we have our auto guardhouse here. We've got two lanes in, two lanes out. And you'll notice that we don't have sidewalk all the way out to Basket. Currently, at Basket, there's not sidewalk or bike lanes or any kind of pedestrian-type traffic. It's not really set up for that. But we do understand that there may be pedestrians that get dropped off or need to walk in. So, we do have a sidewalk that goes from the auto guardhouse. It's ADA accessible, goes from the guardhouse all the way back to the office entrance. And then, for the employees that are driving in, so there will be drop arms and gates, there will be a guard there, it'll be 24-hour security. And as those, as the vehicles come in, they'll come down this drive. We've got multiple types of fence that we'll go through a little bit later, but the idea is to kind of create a farm-type atmosphere. So, you'll see that there's a fence that's along the drive. That's a four-foot, what we call farm fence, it's the double rail. And we'll show a little bit more about that, but it just creates the kind of the ambiance that we want with the facility. And just south of the guardhouse, you'll see that we do have the stormwater pond, and we'll talk a little bit more about those as we get further in. And coming down into the auto parking lot, we did want to highlight that we do have landscaped parking lot islands, so there are trees in those, and we'll talk a little bit more about those as we get into landscaping. You'll notice these kind of more bold shapes, and I do want to highlight those. Those are the dry soils. So, that's part of our two-part stormwater treatment system. When you look at it, it just looks like a grass soil. So, this kind of highlights it, because it's just the way that it comes out in the drawings, but it is just a grass soil that you'd see when you're going into the facility. We'll talk a little bit more about fencing as we get further in, but I just want to highlight that there are some changes in the fence. So, we do have the decorative fence, this is the metal picket that comes down to the auto parking lot. Based on some of the conversations with the residents, or actually one of the business owners right here, Jerry Giedler, he did request that we put in a fence that is a solid fence instead of the decorative metal fence. So, that's why you see a change going from decorative metal to a horizontal wood slat fence that goes across this entire parking lot. That creates a solid barrier so that our employees looking back towards his facility would see the fence and not into his property. Couple of other things to point out, we do have employee areas. So, there's an outside eating area just here on the north side of the auto parking lot. Coming down, we have all of our ADA parking just north of the entrance, along with a, excuse me, a drop-off area, and then EV parking on the south side. So, I've put a lot of information out to you. Before I move to the truck entrance, any questions on that at all?
No, so far, I think you guys have covered everything.
All right, excellent. That's our intent. We're hopefully going to answer most of your questions with this presentation. So, one of the questions that we get a lot is what happens when a full-size truck accidentally comes to the auto entrance? And unfortunately, we had a video, but it's not playing, but we have accounted for that. So, if a, what's called a WD-67, so your standard tractor-trailer does show up at the auto entrance, we have created enough turn radius for that truck to come in, and when he sees that he's at the wrong entrance, he has the ability to maneuver back out and go back out to Basket and to the truck entrance. And I did want to point out, we did put large rocks. So, if you go to the site now, there are already large boulders out there that are kind of protecting and providing security. We're going to maintain those, because truck drivers kind of go wherever they want, unless you put in rocks or something that physically will stop them. So, we have placed those boulders around the truck turnaround. And I apologize if the video's not working, but if you wanted to see, we can show you that at a later time. Moving down to the truck entrance, so all of our truck traffic is intended to come off of T-Bor. So, they will come in, they'll turn to the south, and in this area right here, we have 15 spaces. So, the goal is that there are no trucks staged on T-Bor. And we've looked at how many trucks are coming into the facility per hour. We've based that on how many trucks can be processed through. And we have 15 staging positions here, and two more at the guardhouse. We have a total of 17 staging positions for trucks or tankers to wait before they go into the facility.
Excuse me, how long does it take to empty out one of the trucks, approximately?
Forty-five minutes, I believe. More than that.
Forty-five minutes. So, if you've got a dozen trucks there?
So, that's just to get to the guardhouse. Once you pass the guardhouse, then you drive off to milk-receiving, so there's space for many, many more trucks once you've got past the guardhouse. And then, we have nine milk-receiving bays inside, so we can process nine trucks simultaneously.
Yeah, that 17 is just before the guardhouse. After the guardhouse, there is a large amount of stores that we can have within the site. But we want to make sure that there's not any staging out there on T-Bor, so that's what we have that large amount before the guardhouse.
Thank you.
So, after the staging, we do have the guardhouse here. They'll come down to the south, they'll go past the wastewater pretreatment facility and come over to the truck scale. So, they do go into the building for the truck scale operation. Once they are tested and scaled, then they'll come up and go through the milk-receiving, which is right here. And as Darren said, there's nine bays currently. Once they're done there, they will pull out of the milk-receiving and come back, they'll be scaled again, and then go back to the guardhouse. So, the intention on milk-receiving is that the trucks do not have to go into a reverse movement. So, the benefit there is that we don't have the reverse beam from the trucks, and it's also safety-wise. Any of the finished good products or anything that has to go to the north, they would go past the scales, and then they'll go up further to the north, up to the trailer park. One thing I do want to point out on here is the gravel road that you see outside of the berm. So, we worked with ART and the wastewater department. The public utility, the public sewer that will be coming through the site goes outside of the berm, and it cuts across right here. That's what you see is the stashed line. So, this gravel road that you see is the access for the town if there's ever a maintenance issue with that sewer line. On the south side, I do want to just point out the wastewater treatment facility. So, in the center, we have the name building. We have the aeration basins on the left side, and the equalization tanks on the right side. To the south of that, we do have another berm that will be landscaped to provide screening to 104. And then, on the very south side of that, we have included a 20-foot easement for the future Route 104 trailer easement. So, before I move off the truck entrance, any questions on that? All right, perfect. So, now, I want to talk about emergency access. So, what we've done is we've taken the site and rotated a little bit, so just to orient, so north is to the right, just so that we could get a little bit larger so that you could see what's happening. So, for fire truck access or emergency vehicle access, they can come into either entrance, either the auto entrance or the truck entrance. At the truck entrance, we do have the fire pump house and fire tank. That's also where the FTC, the Fire Department Connection is located, in the pumper hydrant. There will not be any FDCs on the building. So, when the fire department comes in, if they need to charge the line, everything will happen at the fire pump house. A fire taker, where the truck, pumper truck can pull right up into this pavement area and stage here, and connect to the pumper hydrant, which is charged by the Monroe County Water Authority, and can connect directly into the fire. If a fire truck does come into the auto entrance, they can come around, this has all been designed to allow for the truck, fire trucks to be able to maneuver through the parking lot. They can stage in this, there's a drop-off area here, and go into the office and talk to the security there. If they do need to go to the other parts of the site, there's a connection here that connects auto parking to the truck area. Or if they come in and they realize they need to go back, this is also an access drive that the fire trucks can use to go to the trailer parking area. And those will be plowed for winter. All right, so moving from emergency vehicle access, just talking about the fencing. So, we have five different types of fence on site. The one that we talked the most about is the sound wall. So, this is the orange line on the east side of the facility. It is a 14-foot precast concrete sound wall. It is specifically made for absorbing sound. And then, we've also used a texture, which is the stacked stone, to create an irregular shape so that the noise doesn't just bounce off and then go between the buildings. So, this will actually disperse the sound even more. So, we've tried to look at it to create the best solution to avoid increases in noise or any challenges with the sound. It will also be painted in a color that matches the natural surroundings, so it's very similar to this color as shown on the plan. The second type of fence is the horizontal wood slat fence. So, that is the one that I talked about over at the auto parking lot. So, this one was requested by Jerry Giedler, and the intent is to create a look that follows with the farm. So, we would be using a wood that is similar to like an old barn. So, as employees come into the parking lot and they look over at the wood fence, it would have that sort of look of the old barn wood. But then, it does have the metal, which ties into the decorative metal fence to the north and to the south. Which, the decorative metal fence, this is an eight-foot picket. This starts at the sound wall here to the north, comes around the ponds, through the auto guardhouse, down to the horizontal wood slat, and then it's going to continue down to the truck guardhouse or truck entrance, sorry. One thing to point out here is it does cover the ponds, so we intentionally made sure that the ponds were within the security area, so they're not accessible to residents or kids that might find their way into the facility. This is a completely security area, so those ponds would be completely contained. The fourth type of fence, which is similar to the decorative, is a, it's a picket, but at the top it has a curve. So, it's similar to like a chain link fence with the three-strand barbed wire, but this is kind of the upgraded version. So, it looks a little bit nicer, but still provides that same level of security. So, this would come down from the truck entrance, around wastewater, and then go around on the south side over to the sound wall. We intentionally moved it to the backside of the berm so that as the Route 104 trail comes in, they're not right against a security fence, they're actually up against the berm with the trees on it. And then, the last fence that we have that I talked about earlier is our farm fence. And so, this is a, it's actually a concrete fence, so it has the look of wood, but it gives that feeling of being on a farm. And that's mainly at the entrance. It's not really a security fence, it's just to create more of an ambiance. We did pull it back from the side or from the road to make sure that there is room for snowplow, so that the snow can be removed. And you'll see on the south side here, it's extended further to the south so that snow can be piled up south of the auto parking lot. Any questions about fence before I move on?
No, I like the park.
It creates a nice view. All right, so moving into the snowplow storage and operations. So, T-Bor Road is a public road, and so, we were concerned, and we worked with Pat Stevens, how the snowplow would end at the road, turn around and come back out. Once again, we have another video, but it's not working, but this kind of gives you the feel, you can see how the truck pulls in, turns around, backs up, and goes back out. We will provide the access easement for the snowplow. And one thing to point out too is that this is the security fence with the gate right here. So, for some reason, during winter conditions, the facility had to shut down, and this fence was closed, the snowplows would still be able to come in, turn around, and leave the site. The facility is 24 hours, and it should be open at all times, but just in case, we've made sure that there is room for the snowplow to be able to turn around. Another thing to point out is the monument sign, and we'll get into monument signs in a moment, but that is here on the south side. On the north side, as we look at utilities, our backflip preventers and utility services are here, so this was the best location for that monument sign. So, talking about signage, and so this is the front office. Let me give you kind of a look of what the office looks like, and then focus in on the sign, because the sign is large, but when you compare it to the whole office look, it is rather small. So, this is the overall look. And then, as we zoom in, you can see we do have the Fairlife logo on the office. It is eight feet tall. It is powder-coated, powder-coated blue verse with a backlight on the logo. And then, as far as the coverage, so the sign equivalent is less than 0.1% of the sods per footage. On the other signs, this is the, at the auto entrance, this would be just north of the auto entrance. And so, this would be an internally lit sign, and you can see in the daytime what it would look like, and then at nighttime, you can see the logo, the Fairlife logo, and just the address would be lit. So, there would be no actual lighting of the sign with uplighting or anything like that. And then, at the truck entrance, similarly, we have an internally lit sign. This is the daytime view, and the nighttime view, you can see that the logo and all the wording is lit internally, but there are no uplights on the signage. Before I get into utilities, any questions about signage?
You must have read the code regarding signs.
We did. That is correct. And specifically, at the auto entrance, we wanted to make sure that the residents that are just to the north, that they didn't have extra lighting. Just like we looked at the Wallard lights, we wanted to make sure the sign wasn't creating extra light into their facility or their homes. All right, so moving into utilities, once again, we've rotated the site so that you can see a little bit larger, and so I'll just walk through these real quickly. Coming down Coming down T-Bore Road, so there are four things to point out. So we do have the gas main that is shown in yellow. That's going to be the upgrade that our RGE is going to be making. The green line is the public sewer. That's going to be increased to an 18-inch. And that's currently being reviewed. There's a lot of evaluation that has to take place, but the town of Webster is going through that evaluation. Over here on the, what is the north side, is the blue line. This is the water main that we will be upgrading. And then the orange line is the overhead electric that RGE will be upgrading to the site. So those are utilities that will be coming down T-Bore. As you come onto the site, and I'll go into a little more detail on the next slides as we talk about water, all of our water will come in just north of the truck entrance. And the blue lines that you see are our water distribution. The red line is our fire protection. You can see that we have a private fire loop that runs around the building. I'll talk a bit more about that in a moment. And then the green lines are the sewer. And so we'll talk more about that. But the, there is the public line that runs through the facility. And then we have our private sewer lines. And then we've got the gas and electric that come over to the facility as well. So let me dig into those a little bit deeper. So talking about water. So we will have a six inch and an eight inch connection here at T-Bore Road at the end. We'll have meters and backload. They'll be in the hot box, aluminum hot boxes. That's where all the meters and backloads will be. And then they'll enter into the site and be distributed out to the different buildings. Talking about fire. So as I said earlier, we do have a fire tank and fire pump. So we'll have an eight inch service to the building. It'll also be in a hot box. And then it'll enter into the fire pump house. It'll get through an outsy valve into the tank for filling the tank. And then there'll be a fire pump that pressurizes this line around the facility. We do have hydrant space to 300 feet on the center for the code. And then there's all the building connections that you can also see, multiple ones for the different zones of the building. Now, this is a 10-inch fire loop. We are looking at just an eight inch line coming in. It's a 250,000 gallon tank. So it meets all the requirements for the code for one hour to be able to meet the largest zone. And as I talked about earlier, the FDC, the fire department connection is here on the fire pump house. And the pumper hydrant is here at T-Bore Road. So the fire truck can access that. They can connect to both of them and be able to charge the line if needed. Talking about the private sewer system. So we do have sewer lines that run from all the different buildings, the guardhouse, the office. All those run down here closer to T-Bore. There are three lift stations. So there's going to be two sanitary sewer lift stations, one located here, one located here. And those sanitary lift stations will discharge into a manhole. And then it would be gravity into the city system. The reason we're having to do lift stations is the site generally grades from south to north. And unfortunately, we're having to pump. The sewer needs to go the other direction. So we're having to pump uphill on some of the sewer lines. So that's where we have those lift stations. The third lift station is the process lift station. So all of the equipment that's inside, when it discharges to go to the wastewater facility, we have a process lift station that sits here, but then discharges down to the pretreatment facility. Coming out of the pretreatment facility, there will be a line right here between these two tanks, the aeration basins. We will have a partial flume and a meter. So the partial flume will either be a concrete vault with the partial flume in it, or it'll be a fiberglass. It's a closed top sealed lid. So that controls the odors or any issues there. And there will be a meter inside that will be used to monitor the flow from the facility. The connection to the public system is there's going to be one here, or this private system that connects here. The wastewater will connect here at this corner, right by the wastewater facility. And then some of the other buildings, like the truck scale building and the auto guard house or the truck guardhouse, will connect directly into the public sewer, which I'll talk about here in just a second. Which really, I guess is the perfect time to say, the public sewer. So currently, if you go out to the site, there is a sanitary sewer line that runs to the north and runs parallel with T-Bore Road. It comes right across here. As part of this project, we will be relocating that sewer to come down as far south as we can go. The original plan was to take it all the way to the south property line, but just because of inverts and elevations, we only were able to get it to this point. So it does cut through part of the site. Because of that, there are going to be access easements. There are easements on top of the sewer lines. And we will be doing that part of the construction from this point here all the way over here to T-Bore. Moving from sewer into natural gas, as we said earlier, the line will be upgraded in T-Bore. And then it'll come across the site over to our main utility area here on the east side of the building. And then same thing with electric. So electric will be overhead until it gets into the facility and then it will go underground. It'll come around the south side of the facility over to the main electrical room. And the transformers and electrical service will be on this side. Moving into the wastewater pretreatment facility. So as I said earlier, there's going to be a discharge over here on the west side between the two aeration basins. So that would be where this pretreatment facility discharges. It comes through this line over to the partial flume and sewer and sewer meter, and then comes into the public main at this point right here. Kind of working from left to right. So these tanks on the left side are the aeration basins. This is the main wastewater building in the middle. And then we've got our equalization tanks on the right side. And then on the north side, for sludge unload, this is actually another closed building. So the trucks would pull in, the doors could close, and they could unload any of the sludge before it's removed from the site. But that would all be done inside the building. And the plan is that we still will be meeting the 2 million gallons per day discharge at full buildout. We'll be meeting the pretreatment requirements. And all odors will be captured within the building of the tanks. So the tanks are closed top. So there will be no odors leaving this area. Just to give you a little bit of perspective on what this wastewater looks like, what the tanks look like. So these are similar tanks that were at other facilities. So they are steel tanks with a closed top. And this is what those equalization tanks and aeration basins look like. Before I move off the utilities, any questions on all the utilities over wastewater?
These tanks you're showing right now, those are all part of the wastewater treatment facility.
That's correct.
That's impressive.
Yeah, these are, all of these tanks, the four large tanks and the three smaller tanks are all part of the wastewater. So we're still going through some design. They're less than 50 feet. They're usually more like 35 to 40. But we will keep them below the height. All right. So moving into stormwater. So with the stormwater requirements, we did have to do a two-part treatment system. And that's so that we can meet the water quality and the water quantity requirements. So you'll see that we've got the, and they're a little bit hard to see here just because of all the grading. As I said earlier, it grades from south to north. It's about a 20-foot difference from on the south side of the facility to the north side. So you can see our contours. There's quite a few of them. But we've basically got two systems running along the east side and the west side. And these are the dry swales. That's the first part. So as the water comes top of the parking lots or the green space, it goes into these dry swales. It goes through a media that helps with the water quality before it goes into our underground system and then goes over to our two large wet ponds that are on this northwest side. And then these discharge, one discharges out to here. There's a small drainage way that runs on the backside of these residential properties, which we've been working with Pat Stevens in the highway department about making sure that this drainage swale is cleaned out, that's been maintained. And so he's going through and reviewing that now. And we've spoken with the neighbors to make sure that they're aware of that as well. The other pond discharges into this current wetland system that goes out here to the north. We have two other small discharges. So one is on the east side of this berm. So we wanted to make sure that we weren't causing any flooding problems by putting the berm in. So we put a small system that goes through here and discharges to one of the existing points on the north side. And then there's also another swale that discharges here on the south side. And it's just a small system here that discharges in there as well. As part of the stormwater, we do look at erosion semi-control. So we have a three-phase plan. So the very first one is our initial. So that's where we go out. We want to put protection around the wetlands. We put in a silt fence around the perimeter, do our construction entrance and do preparations for stockpiles. The second phases are kind of what we call the intermediate. So that's kind of, as we start to put in the stormwater, and you can see the ponds are starting to go in, we start putting protection around those to make sure that they're not silting up. We will use those as sediment basins. As the site, as rainfall hits the site, it comes down to the stormwater basins. We will collect that sediment there. And then from time to time, we'll go out to clean that out as we go through construction. And then with final, we protect the site until everything is stabilized. And what that means is that either there is concrete or asphalt or gravel, or that the grass is covered at least, I believe, at 70 to 80% of the site. So talking about grasses, moving into landscaping. So with landscaping, we wanted to really highlight the auto entrance. So as you come into the facility, there are trees that are going to be along the auto entrance. As you drive past the guardhouse, a lot of trees lining that drive. And as I said earlier, we'll have trees within the auto parking lot to provide some shade. We will have some down at the truck area, just within this island, just to decorate some other, a nice area. It's a grassed area. It's just, it's nice to have the trees there for the shade. The other big aspect of our landscaping is along the berm. And as you can see, it's heavily treated. We're doing a combination of deciduous and evergreen. And it's actually on both sides of the fence. And I did a zoom in here so you can see just kind of a better look at it. Primarily, the trees will be on the residential side, providing the screening. But we do have some trees on the Fairlife side. That's also for sound attenuation to help with as the noise comes off the vehicles. When it hits the trees, it starts to disperse it. But it also creates a better ambiance as you come into the site. And the next slide, but we do have some pictures of some of the trees if you wanted to see this. We did work with some of the local landscaping companies just to understand what are the right trees for this area, whether it's for protection from disease or making sure that they grow well in this area. So we have to work with the local nursery to make sure that these are available. And so one of the last things we wanted to talk about was just the parcel assemblage. And so there's two phases of this. So the very first phase is subdivision of two lots. So the first one is this blue lot. So it is being broken into separate lots so that we can, so that Fairlife can purchase this one here in blue. And then on this green lot, it's being subdivided so that we can take this parcel as well. And then the red that you see is the combination of all of this. So what we're currently doing right now on the subdivision is we're working with the county surveyor. He's reviewing the subdivision plans. Those have been created. We've submitted those. Unfortunately, he was on vacation last week, so it's going a little bit slower. But we're supposed to get comments tomorrow. As soon as we get those comments, we'll turn those around and get that recorded for the subdivision of these two lots. And then immediately after that, we're going to be following, we'll have the combination lot. That'll be to the town next Wednesday for this red parcel to combine it all into the 110.4 acres. So we are going through those processes and those are typical places.
So the five parcels have yet to be combined, correct?
That's correct.
So that's where an issue right now, yeah.
Yeah. And that's where we would look to possibly have that as another contingent item in the resolution. We understand that has to be done and we are working towards it. And we have dates and times that we're working towards. Any questions about this part of it at all?
That's quite a thorough description of the whole project, that's for sure.
I'll end it back to Darren just for you to kind of point things out.
I'll just take the opportunity to summarize. I mean, hopefully through this process, you've seen that we've met with our neighbors and the local community. We have listened to them and we have changed our design to try and mitigate any issues or concerns that they may have. Obviously, tonight, we've given you as much detail as we feel is necessary. And then really, we're looking for the town board's grant industrial use permit and such other conditions as support seems necessary and appropriate. So thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. And why don't we, what is public hearing? So there's some residents here who wish to speak in regards to this project? Well, let's do this. Let's open it up to the fore, okay? Okay, with you guys? Do you want to turn that and speak in the fore against this project? What's that?
They must have done a very good job checking in.
Presentation was very thorough.
I've got a question. Security cameras, do you have them at the facility?
Yes, we will.
And what about the hours for the security guards? Is it 24/7? We did meet with some of your folks today and explain what the situation was. Pretty difficult to move forward with approval on this thing at this point. As much as I think everybody here would like to do that, but we don't have, the lots combined yet. We don't have the MYLARS. So it's going to be difficult to get a subdivision approval on it. And that would have to be part of the preliminary approval. So we spoke with your folks today there, I think Josh and Paul there?
I was in the initial conversations, but I did talk to Josh.
But anyways, consensus was to consider tabling this. And even if we have to have another special meeting in a week or two, until we've got, because there's different departments are still looking for miscellaneous items that they need to have to be fully comfortable. And as opposed to leaving all these strings hanging, let's see if we can get it all combined. And if we take another week on this, it won't impact a whole lot. I think you still have to get, what's that, Josh? You still have to go over the community, correct?
Yeah, that's, my understanding is that's taking place sometime October.
Yeah, so there's no, no. By correcting what I'm saying with, as far as, we don't have all the complete information.
Yeah, I mean, I think by and large, the majority of technical comments have been adequately addressed. There's just the main issue of the subdivision plan issue.
And that makes it difficult for approval. And you can't really make a subject to that because there's really nothing. We're putting the cart before the horse, basically, by doing that. So can we, would you be okay with tabling it?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, we talked today, you know, we went through it all, pretty much the way it ended up getting resolved somewhat. So do you want to request to be tabled to another meeting? And what, I don't know. As soon as you get together, I think this board is more than willing to have another special meeting.
Yes.
To address it and move forward with it, if it's next week or the week after.
Yeah, my only concern is, so we'll have the MYLARS, we'll have comments Wednesday from the county engineer, from county surveyor, I'm sorry.
You'll have them?
That's what he's committed to us. He'll have comments on Wednesday. So we can get MYLARS probably by Thursday and Thursday or Friday, get those submitted. And then we're supposed to have the combined lot by next Wednesday. So just thinking timing wise, next week might be a little bit too soon.
So two weeks?
Yeah, that would probably be the...
Does that work?
That's a regularly scheduled for October 3rd.
Okay. So you want, we'll schedule for October 3rd?
That sounds like the...
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So you're, okay. So the applicant is requesting to table to October 3rd. So am I going to make a motion to that?
I'll make a motion to table the Fairlife project to the next planning meeting scheduled for October 3rd.
Okay, a second. All fair? Thank you. Appreciate it. You did a heck of a job with this. You covered all the bases with it. Yep, that's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, well, can we force all neighbors or... Okay, well, just, you folks, do you want to talk to the neighbors or... You're on it, yeah, okay, talk to us. Help us out here. Who wants to listen?
Well, I will, I'll, okay, you guys...
Just use a microphone.
I think...
Use a mic, go ahead.
I can be loud.
No, that's great.
Bring on my stand, yeah.
I think it's just interesting to see what the neighbor's perspective on this one is.
Um, I would say that the communication should have been a lot better. We were completely missed on the first neighbor meeting. Weren't aware of it whatsoever. The second one came about two weeks prior. I traveled for work, I couldn't make it to the second meeting by the time we were given notice of it. So this is the first time I actually saw this entire presentation. And now I have to digest it to try and get information or ask questions. So, and I think it was really unclear what was going to happen at this meeting and if we should be here or not. We got different dates, we got different letters, we got different emails. So if you're going to come back in two weeks, I think that needs to be really clear to the neighbors what this meeting is and what they should be asking questions, or what it should be, is my first thing. So I think that it would be great if we just had some more information, like, you're digging into the sewer right behind our house. What does that mean for our sewer system? Right? There's going to be drainage right behind our house. What does that mean for us? That's not really, you're asking for, you know, positive or negatives. That's not really what this meeting is for. But those are still questions that we have as neighbors, right?
Well, actually, this meeting is a public hearing, and that's the intent of it, for people to, you know, any issues that they may have to bring up. Because once this is done, then we close the public hearing, then it's just up to the board to make a decision on it. So we're looking at anything you feel that... I'd rather, I'd rather get it aired now as opposed to when they come back, because it's all fresh right now. And when they come back, I don't want to go through the whole thing again. If they can just highlight some of the...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of great, right? When you guys came, you took the pictures, and we did all that stuff. But we're talking, you know, the sewage things are going to be 50-foot high possibly. So what is that going to look like? You know, those kind of things that we're still, we still have questions on. This is the first time we're seeing anything on the sewer. I mean, that's going to come right from our property. So what is that going to mean for us, if anything? But we don't know. I mean, that's the kind of stuff that I'm just trying to digest after what we're seeing in the presentation. Because again, I couldn't come to any of the other meetings. We weren't even told at the first meeting. So that's the kind of stuff that I guess I'm looking for answers on. I think there's a lot of good. I think it's great that we see the pictures and all of that good stuff. And you gave us a lot of great information, but that would be my...
Okay, alright, thank you. Can we get your name to the record?
Sydney.
Can we get your name to the record and the address, please?
Sydney, S-Y-D-N-Y, Labore, L-A-B-O-R-E, 725, Calhoun.
Thank you. Alright, what we'll do, we should have closed the whole here, we'll keep it open. The public hearing portion of it open, so if there's comments at the next one, we'll throw it up. We'll still have it open, if you can do so.